Hi, everybody. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great, good. So I'm just going to begin by giving you a brief summary tonight. We have a wonderful team here that is still collecting data despite our challenges technologically and has a report for you. So let me just get down here. So our case counts as of the 21st. Our 1,460 laboratory confirmed, 107 probables, 23 active, 1,421 recovered, and 6,535 negative. We've had 83 people in Manasha hospitalized and we have had 16 fatalities, one reported last week. Looking at our COVID-19 activity level from December 2nd through December 15th, which is the most recent state report that we have been able to download and use. We've had 101 cases in the last two weeks. Our case rate is 580 per 100,000, or if you can extrapolate, it would be 58 per 10,000, or five or six per 1,000. So our burden is very high. And if you recall, we have the burden case rate laid out for us. The state considers critically high at 1,000 per 100,000 people. And we were in that range for quite some time. We've gone down under 1,000 per 100,000 population. But anything over 350 is still considered very high. And actually Harvard considers very high in that range to be in the red zone. So we're still in the Harvard red zone. We really need to keep going and make sure that we distance mask, don't gather in large crowds, particularly outside of the household, and really celebrate holidays with people that we live with. So just want to make sure that people understand this. We've been in such a critically high area for so long that when we come down to 580 per 100,000, while that's going in the right direction, it's still the red zone and we still have to be very, very careful. So our case rate again is very high and the activity is very high. Again, 580 cases per 100,000. It's an increase from the last time we met, which was 479.7 cases per 100,000. So we went up just a hair. This is what it looks like. This is our trend and burden through December 13th. We can actually take our metrics back to April 1st when we had our first case. We're running short of room in our chart. So you can see our chart starts in June and it travels along this line all the way through. Well, you can see a little bump right after July 4th. It started to go up a bit in August. Again, we noticed the trajectory go around Labor Day and the beginning of school. And it just rose very, very quickly right into the red zone within a few weeks. And then it remained in the red zone for quite some time until probably around mid-November. And then it's been coming down nicely. And I think part of that is I have noticed that people are adhering to masks, that they are distancing, that they aren't gathering in large groups outside of their family unit to celebrate holidays. So you know, it's just small units and actually people aren't going out as frequently as they did. But then, you know, we get a little bit complacent when we see things come down. So we're going to have to really keep working on it as a community. And really for the Manasha Joint School District Plan, which I shared with you the last time we met, we want to get under 350 per 100,000 in order to go back safely to school and meet in person or hybrid. If you have high community rates, it's not recommended that you have in-person learning because there's circulating virus. So you know, it's really good. We do all these things to keep our, our community healthy as well as keeping our businesses open and our schools open. Just want to give you a brief update on the testing sites. The testing sites are undergoing a bit of change. Right before the holidays, there will be just a little bit of a break. We're trying to make sure that we have testing as available as we possibly can. The Wisconsin Army National Guard is doing testing. Data Care is doing mobile testing now out at Christ the Rock Church on particular days. We have everything listed on this website and the dates that they'll be open during the latter part of December, early January, March, through March. So if you want to check that out, make sure that you can avail yourself to tests if you're symptomatic or have had close contact with somebody who has been COVID positive. Vaccine information is now posted on the website. The good news is that we do have two vaccines that were approved during the emergency use authorization. One is the Pfizer vaccine and the other is the Moderna vaccine. Pfizer, we already know that people are being vaccinated in Phase 1A. It's the healthcare providers, long-term care and their workers and healthcare workers that will be vaccinated during this period. There has been a little bit of disruption in that. They, the state had thought they were going to be receiving more vaccine than they did initially. But now with two vaccines on the market, it's going to loosen that up a little bit. And they're requesting shipments right along. So you know, thankfully, we're getting started with vaccination. It will be some time before we get vaccination to the public. The Manasha Health Department has applied to be a vaccinator. So we have followed through with that information. And we're really doing a lot of planning around vaccines and getting that out to the public so that people can be protected. Holiday recommendations, again, even though we've come down quite a bit and I'm glad to see that trajectory kind of coming down, we do have to be very, very cautious with, again, not gathering in crowds, staying with people within your homes that you live with. If you're outdoors, they're even saying really small groups if at all, no gatherings, wearing a mask if you do, keeping that distance, hand hygiene. It's just really important to be that vigilant so we can come out on the other side of this pandemic intact and, and with our fans, friends and family. So that's about all I have tonight. Does anybody have questions from me?
Nancy, I do. James Taylor.
Hi.
Thank you, Mayor. I saw a piece over this weekend and the federal government spent $1 billion on the drug that President Trump received right after he had the COVID virus. And they say that this drug is sitting on shelves. And unless you ask your doctor for it, you're not, you don't get it. So I don't know if you know anything about that drug and if that is distributed throughout our area. You know anything about that?
I can't speak to that right now. I'd be happy to look into it a little bit more for you. And I think I know what you're talking about, but I don't want to speak to it until I have more information to share.
Sure, okay. It just sounds like if you, if you get this drug like the president did soon enough after your exposure, it could help tremendously beating the virus. So I'll call your office and we'll talk about it. But I think that's.
Well, I know that they're much better at treating individuals that have contracted COVID. I think my biggest concern right now is that we don't know the long-term effects. Well, we do know that there are long-term effects from COVID-19. It affects everybody differently, children and adults, as a matter of fact. So I think we just have to be very vigilant with the things that we know work so that we don't, don't catch COVID-19 and we can keep our friends and families safe. And it just goes back to all the basics that I think we've been talking about for nine months, right? 10 months, 11 months? So you know, I think if we can really encourage each other to keep up the great work with bringing this trajectory down and, and really making a concerted effort, it will help everyone.
Also, with 13 deaths in Manasha and the Health and Human Services are the ones that bought this billion dollars worth of this drug for the, for the public. And with that many deaths in Manasha, if there is a tool that we, that is out there for the people, I think we should make them aware of that. But I'll talk to you at your office. Thank you.
More than happy to talk to you about it.
Alderman Nichols.
Thank you. Dr. McKinney, do you have an idea of the positivity rate of tests for Manasha?
Well, actually I did because, you know, we have been a little bit hampered by not having our metrics with us. But our great team went to work today and looked at the last six days to see what our positivity rate is because that is a big issue. Our positivity rate was 15.9 in the last six days. So that's between December 15th through the 20th. So 15.9 is much better than it was in the past. However, remember we always, and I'm going to go back a little bit because our benchmark on the positivity, I'd be gleeful if we were under 10. But if you look at New York City and what they were doing and considering going virtual with their schools, they were just over 3% for their community positivity rate. So we're up at 15.9, which is still high, but it's less than it was. And then what you do to look at that is how many tests are you doing? And our goal since the beginning has been 28 tests per day. And I had them look at that in the last six days. We've done an average of around 27. So if you look at it from a red zone, we're in the orange on both of those. I'm encouraged, but I want to make sure we get through this holiday season and things keep going down in the right direction. So thank you for asking because that is a huge piece of this puzzle. The other thing we looked at is hospital capacity. And, and actually we started implementing a set of measures that's promoted by the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention. Now, CDC has, they call it, it's, it's actually looking at the transmission potential in schools. And so number one, they use 200 cases per 100,000. And then they actually ask for less than 10% positivity in a community. And then they also look at this metrics for hospitalizations. How many available hospital beds do, does a community have? And how many available ICU beds? Because you need to have enough capacity to take care of everything that your community has to use the healthcare system for. And we've, we've done better when, when we had that really high spike and you saw the trajectory. We've come down quite a bit from that and the hospital systems have noticed that we have more available beds. So, so I mean, I keep, I hope that we can continue through the holiday season. We have two more holidays and I'd like to see us, you know, mid-January with good hospital capacity, with good ICU capacity, with the ability to say that our positivity rate has gone down and that we have enough testing at the same time. Because if you don't have enough testing and your positivity rate is okay, it means you still have a lot of circulating virus. So you know, you've been looking at this with me for nine months, 10 months. And I think you can see what we're, we're looking at it as a package for our community. And our biggest goal is to prevent fatalities and prevent transmission. So, yeah.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Alderman Severnick.
Thank you, Mayor. Nancy, do you have any type of plan in place as far as administering the vaccine yet? The when, what and where? And then I'm guessing also too, because we share our health department with the school districts, that you have a school vaccination program or plan in place?
So that's, there's a lot going on, right? So we have to make sure. In fact, I was sitting in on a webinar with the state today. This is what we're working on right now along with testing and making sure we have enough of that. So the state is actually saying there, it's a three-legged stool. And the first leg of the stool is making sure that you have people in your community that want to be vaccinated. And it looks as though our state is pretty, pretty good about wanting to be vaccinated. So that's a good thing. The second thing they looked at is the system for delivery. So making sure that we have a way to get the vaccines to where they need to go quickly. So in Phase 1 and beyond, they'll be using, especially with Pfizer vaccine where they have to have ultra cold storage, they send it to a hub and then that hub sends it to spokes. So in that first phase, which is, like I said, the long-term care facilities and their healthcare providers and hospital systems and their, their healthcare providers. The healthcare systems do their own. The long-term care facilities, which is like your nursing home, your skilled nursing homes, they're taking care of, they're, they're signing up for pharmaceutical administration. So pharmacies administer it, which is good. So what it does is it frees us a little bit up to continually plan and to make sure we have enough capacity to begin other parts of vaccination. So one B then would be our essential workers. And there's more clarity that needs to come around that, exactly who is the essential workers. And you know, I know EMS, you know, folks and basically our fire and, you know, other systems. I know teachers have been suggested in that, that thing. So we're, we're good with our three-legged stool, but we have a lot of planning to do yet. We've been out looking at sites to see if there's places we could go to make it more convenient for people. And we've got a lot of willing partners to help us. Over the years, every year, we have done mass flu vaccine clinics. So that helps us to, that's been always an emergency preparedness exercise. So that's helped to prepare us. And what we've had to do is pivot toward a model that doesn't bring people together, right? So this past year, our emergency preparedness plan was to do our influenza by appointments based. So you know, we've been practicing even this fall before we had the vaccine. And now we're in the active planning stage. I just filled out a survey for the state. Yes, the school district, you know, they are a close partner and we want to make sure that they and our essential workers are in the next phase. And then finally, you know, making sure that we have a vaccine out to the general public. And it may be different ways that we do that. So.
Yeah, I'm going to say that hopefully you have large facilities for this because when you had the influenza shots at City Hall, it was out the door and everybody was, I couldn't believe it. I'm like, what's everyone in line for? That was, that was either a year, two, yeah, about two years ago.
It's likely to be a different model.
I hope you're looking at large gymnasiums, the university, places like that to do this kind of thing.
Yeah, we just toured last week. We toured the University of Wisconsin, Fox Cities. They have been our partner for years. So I think, I think we'll land on something that's very hopefully accessible to people and where we will have good uptick of the vaccines. So I think the biggest thing is to make sure that we have enough people that, that get the vaccine.
And we talked about that. And you're possibly looking at some of those University of Wisconsin-Oshkosh nursing students that have been involved with us in the past. Is that, is that working out?
I, we have to coordinate with the instructor. But we were able to get a UW-Green Bay. They call it RN to BSN. So the person is already a registered nurse and can already administer vaccine and would do the internship at Manasha. So we're already looking at student capacity. So it, it would be invaluable because I think that's going to be a challenge as well, making sure we have enough capacity to do this. So all of the above. And then we have our internal team. Christine is leading that team and, and they have, you know, they're, we're right on top of it. But it's complex and it will take work and it will take a while. That's why I think people need to realize that even though we have a vaccine and there's light at the end of the tunnel and we can see our way through, it's going to take some time.
Hopefully less time than we want. So, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Alderman Grady.
Thank you, Mayor. I really enjoyed the questions from Alderman Nichols and Alderman Severnick. And Nancy, you're doing a great job putting to a situation like this is. So I appreciate the answers and let's get this put behind us before the first quarter of 2021.
Wouldn't that be great? I, I, I want to be realistic with you all. I don't know that that's going to happen. I would love it. I would love nothing more than to tie this one up with a bow and get it out the door. But I, I need to be realistic with the community and honest with you all that it's going to be longer. And that's why I'm saying, you know, please, please don't let your guard down. This is highly transmissible and it's an infectious disease. And we know there's long-term effects. And, and we just have to do everything we can to suppress the disease, especially those that are most vulnerable. Keep up the good work, everybody. Done a good job bringing that rate down.
Alderman Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor. Nancy, don't forget that if we're looking for a large facility, we have the brand new Public Works facility, which is 48,000 square feet. And it's a brand new facility. So who knows, maybe we can use that.
Well, I did mention that, you know, Todd is on that team doing the inspection of those facilities. So we, we did talk about that. So I will again mention it to him. And I think it largely depends on when things become operational and if there's, you know, it's, it, we kind of take over things when we go in. You know, we, we have to look at what's operational and, and available to us. So we'll do our best.
I just didn't want that, just didn't want that to be overlooked. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, seeing no further questions, we'll move on to the minutes to receive. Do we have a motion? Alderman Severnick.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'll move that we receive minutes A, B, C, and D. And apparently there's no communications.
We, we tried to keep things short as much as possible for this agenda.
I'll second that.
There's a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Hi.
Any opposed? Seeing none, we'll move on to public comments of any.
Before we do that, maybe I should have been a little more, basically for the public, all we did was approve our minutes of the administration, the Board of Public Works, our Personnel Committee and the Water and Light Commission. So I shouldn't have just said A, B, C, and D because not everybody's aware of what that is. So that's all those were, were minutes from those meetings.
Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak this evening?
Mrs. Taylor. Taylor, 545 Broad Street. First, I was going to ask that the minutes of the Manash utilities be held because it reflects from the November 18th meeting that there was no public comment. Yet there was public comment via email from me personally due to the fact that the offices were closed to the public. And there was no link to a virtual meeting. I submitted my comments via email and I know that they would receive. So I was going to ask that they be held until those minutes were corrected.
We could have that added.
Thank you. Secondly, I would like the Chairman of Administration to put on a future agenda, the recreation of the IT Steering Committee. Third, I would like the Chairman of the Personnel Committee to put on a future agenda, a request for proposals for legal services. A cost benefit and scope of services to justify the replacement of the current attorney at her reappointment with a legal firm. Third, or fourth actually, in the appointment section for the Nina Manash's Stewardage Commission, I would like the mayor to explain his justification for naming a staff member to the commission versus a member of the public. And if he contacted the current person that's sitting on there ahead of time to say that he was going to be replacing him. And because this is a staff member, normally these committees and commissions are volunteer bases. These meetings are held at 8 o'clock in the morning on a weekday. That means the taxpayer will be putting the bill for his presence at this meeting. Additionally, I'm just curious as to the mayor's justification for this. The other, I did want to focus on the BRIN project, the TIP. First of all, I'm not in favor of the proposed 70% annual gross tax increment being allocated toward the developer. I would like to know the justification behind that. It's also based on a mixed-use development of $7.5 million. Yet a year ago in my tax bill, the mayor identified the mixed-use development as a $10 million project. So we've already lost significant dollars off the top. Furthermore, by having 70% of the annual increment devoted to the developer, how long is that going to take with the remainder to pay off the over $1 million stormwater utility that we will be constructing? The acquisition of the property that the city is now responsible for, that was originally the developer responsibility and so on and so forth. They came into this project with no expectation of any funding from the city, from the taxpayer. The project was delayed due to COVID and now we're back a year later and nothing has been done with that site. I'm very disappointed. And lastly, regarding the BRIN, I would ask that Commissioner Golden step down from the RDA as this is a conflict of interest in my opinion, as he is the major contractor for the BRIN site and the Bonta site. And he has a financial incentive that this project go forward. And lastly, regarding the Strong Neighborhoods Program, you know, I have been opposed to this project in the way it has been implemented and not a philosophy, basically because I think the strongest thing that can be done to our neighborhoods is code enforcement. And that has not happened. And that has not happened. Instead, we are basically giving away money with no reimbursement and it is not sustainable. A loan program is much more beneficial. It puts money back into the program that you can have a revolving loan. Staff does not want to do that because there's too much work involved. To me, that's not an excuse that's valid. There is, there are other people at City Hall that should be able to help out with processing some of these papers, this paperwork. I'm also opposed to investors being able to benefit from a conversion from a duplex to a single family if that property will still be used for rental. Because to me, they're just using that to as as a benefit to them. It's still going to be rental. It's not going to help the community as a whole. I would like to have that, those dollars, when it is a major change from a duplex to a single family, be owner occupied. I'm, I've just been very disappointed with the way this whole program has gone forward. The people that have benefited from it love it, but it is not benefiting the majority of the neighborhoods in the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Taylor. I do want to comment that the offices of the utilities are open for the public meetings. And anyone is welcome at those meetings in the commission room, just as always. So.
I'm sorry, you're welcome. I said that they were closed. That's why I commented via email. Thank you.
But the, the offices are open. So if anyone does wish to go to those meetings, they definitely have that opportunity. Seeing no one else, we'll move on to the consent agenda. There are five items this evening. Do we have anyone who wishes to have items separated? Alderman Severnick?
Why don't we just take them one at a time because it's going to be the same amount of time?
Okay. For item one.
So I'll have Alderman Nichols go ahead.
Move to approve the storage tank insurance renewal with Great American E and S Insurance Company in the amount of $10,943.75 as recommended by the Administration Committee.
Okay. There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
One question.
Sure.
We were going to follow up with other potential quotes to see if there were any out there. And so I just thought we'd check in before we move ahead with the motion.
Attorney Captain?
There are none that I'm aware of.
Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Severnick?
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman Tom Grady?
Aye.
Alderman Ted Grady?
Aye.
Alderman Nichols?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Motion carries six zero.
Do we have a motion for item two?
I have a question about common council minutes, Mayor. We usually have minutes.
We would normally have minutes. The minutes were complete and they're rather long and they are on our server and we could not access them. So they would have had to have been recreated. So we'll wait for the next meeting to approve those.
Okay.
We intentionally left them off.
Well, I was curious because we had minutes for the committee meetings. So.
And it's been policy that we cannot take action on the committee meetings unless there's minutes for them. So that's why we, and they were short for the most part. So we had to recreate them. Well.
Okay. Before I make the motion for item number two, I do have a question for Attorney Captain. I noticed there was a memo in the packet from Director McKinney with a reduced amount from the original motion. So what would be the appropriate way to handle this motion?
Are you there, Attorney Captain?
Just put in the new figure.
Yes. The new figure can just be inserted in the motion.
Thank you. Move to approve the Manassas Health Department's request to receive and spend the DHS DPH ELS Enhancing Detection Supplemental Funds Award for the amount of $130,400 for January 1st through June 30th, 2021.
Is there a second? Some motion and a second? Is there any further discussion?
Yes, Mayor. Director McKinney, could you explain the changes in amounts, please?
Sure. So shortly after our meeting, we received word from the Division of Public Health that they had gone back in to recalculate the amount that they were going to release to us from the CARES Act funds. So they determined that rather than having a longer two-year period and having the greater amount, since they didn't know what, you know, the new administration would be coming up with as far as funding, they recalculated and shortened up the timeframe knowing that we would have other funding opportunities. At least that's my understanding right now. So that's the reduced amount and the reduced timeframe and there'll be additional funds probably coming in the near future.
And do you feel these are sufficient funds to get you to that next step?
Yes.
Okay.
Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Severnick?
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman Tom Grady?
Aye.
Alderman Ted Grady?
Aye.
Alderman Nichols?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Motion carries six zero.
Do you have a motion for item number three?
Mayor?
Yes?
Okay. Item number three, I would like to make a motion to approve the change order for Northeast Sarsaparilla contract unit number 2020 dash 01, street reconstruction and rehabilitation in the amount of $67,835.32. Change order number two.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Do you have discussion, James?
No, but I was going to take the next one.
Oh, we have to have a vote first.
Well, I know that, but I'm just not because I'm going to take the Board of Public Works. Mark doesn't hear.
No, that's fine. I just usually take it if people's lights stay on, if they have a comment. So, Court Cor- Kramer?
Alderman Severnick?
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman Tom Grady?
Aye.
Alderman Ted Grady?
Aye.
Alderman Nichols?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Motion carries six zero.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for the payment, not payment, Northeast Sarsaparilla contract unit 2020 dash 01, street reconstruction and rehabilitation in the amount of $280,387.45. Payment number five, final.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Severnick?
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman Tom Grady?
Aye.
Alderman Ted Grady?
Aye.
Alderman Nichols?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Motion carries six zero.
We have a motion for item five. Alderman Grady?
Yes, thank you. I'll make the motion then for the approval of the employee handbook updates.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second and a third. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Severnick?
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman Tom Grady?
Aye.
Alderman Ted Grady?
Aye.
Alderman Nichols?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Motion carries six zero.
Item J is action items. The first item is the beverage operators license applications. Do we have a motion, Alderman Nichols?
Thank you. Move to approve the beverage operators license applications for the 2019 through 2021 licensing period as listed in the clerk's memo dated December 21st, 2020.
I'll second.
There is a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Severnick?
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman Tom Grady?
Aye.
Alderman Ted Grady?
Aye.
Alderman Nichols?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Motion carries six zero.
FYI, the accounts payable were not included because of our computer outage. So those will be on the next agenda as well. Item two is the Second Amendment to the.
Item two, Mayor, can I ask a question on the payables?
Sure.
Since those checks probably already went out. Is this a mute point? I mean, what's the process? There's a lot of money being spent on a weekly and bi-weekly basis and we didn't get any information. So I'm a little concerned that some of the checks might not have been looked at properly, but I understand the situation, but just little clarification, please.
Director Sessman, did you want to comment on that?
Well, usually by the time we get to council meeting, the first check run would have already certainly been in the mail. But I can definitely assure you that both myself and Finance Manager Pearson are, are looking at everything as usual before everything goes out.
And I believe statutorily they have to be approved at the council level, correct?
I believe so, yes.
Yeah, but if you sent them out, what's the point? That's what Ted's trying to say.
I understand. So the Second Amendment to the BRIN? Does anyone wish to make a motion or?
I think we should hear from Sam first. I called Sam this morning with some questions. Alderman, I mean, Mrs. Taylor had brought up some good points, some of the same points that I brought up to Sam. He explained them very well. And hopefully it'd be good for Sam to kind of fill us in first, I think, before we make a motion. So it's better understood, if that's all right with everyone.
Sure. Director Schrader, would you like to give us an app this quick?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So in, in the common council packet tonight is the Second Amendment to the Land Purchase and Development Agreement for the BRIN project with YBR Properties. Just to kind of give a little bit of more of a background, again, this development agreement was presented and approved last winter as we kind of moved forward that we were working with RF Development Group at that time with the primary developer out of the state of New York through, through the spring and into the summer. It became kind of evident that the, the developer had some major concerns with COVID, which, which turned out to have also concerns that, that extended to their investors. So luckily we were able to look and actually assign that development agreement over with the same exact project to YBR Properties. I know Brett and Molly with YBR Properties, the managing members are present tonight. If there are specific questions after this, they are present. But basically, YBR Properties was able to, a local group, I think it's been noted before, kind of a newly formed group looking at some new investment properties, but with several investors that are, are supporting this group to kind of move this project forward. So again, we, we had approved the assignment as part of the First Amendment to the Development Agreement this past, or earlier this fall. So once we had moved that forward, that assignment, and I believe that was end of August, early September, we had kind of updated a few timelines and the group worked very diligently, I guess, throughout that time to take off where the previous developer left off, get construction drawings, get finalized construction budgets, work with their investor group to ensure that they have, you know, the, the positivity and the investment to be able to move this project forward as well as work on the financing and with the banks and, and things of that nature. So again, through, through that period, as recently, I believe it was just almost a week before our, our previous meeting. So end of November, early December, there were a couple of notations made it by this development group that there, there was a shortfall and, and possibly some, some misnumbers, I guess, in the, in the original pro forma that was, that was developed. So again, what we, what we had looked at or the development group had kind of came to the city and, and asked, does the city have the capacity? Because this project isn't an existing TIF district. Yes, the original developer did say they were going to, you know, do this development without any incentive. But at the same token, we are, you know, working with this new development group. It became evident that the banks, in order to lock in their financing, was going to kind of need to basically stabilize this development to the first 10 years or so of its life. And that's oftentimes what these TIF districts are designed to do, right? They are designed to allow this construction project to happen, to stabilize that development, to move that forward. So again, so that was kind of what was presented, I guess, in a communication at the previous meeting. And since then, staff did work with the development group to bring forward the drafted Second Amendment to this land purchase and development agreement that is in front of the, the common council for, for your consideration tonight. So I, I do want to make a few things clear. I probably won't go through specifically the development agreement or the Second Amendment unless there's specific questions regarding the performance incentive. Basically what this is looking at is a pay-go style TIF. So again, it's based upon the revenue that the city receives as part of that tax increment district. So so they pay, you know, into that TIF district fund and this pay-go would provide an annual incentive of 70% of that back to them or that performance incentive. So that 70% would go through the life of the district up to, again, life of the district or 20% of that, of the valuation as of 1-1 of 2023. So again, that would be the first year of the full valuation. It was noted earlier regarding the, the actual project amount of, you know, was, was looked at with the Second Amendment to, to put 7.5 million versus the previous nine million. What we started to look at was the actual, the actual project. So the, the 10 million or, excuse me, the nine million that was presented within the original development agreement, again, that is a number that is provided by the developer. It's looked at as, as a valuation, not as necessarily an assessment. In addition, it was looked at as an estimate at that time. Now that we're much closer and further along with construction numbers, budgetary numbers, hard costs with the project, we did have a conversation with the assessor and, and feel that you know, while the hard costs of this project or the value of this project may be considered north of that 10 million, 10, 11 million, the actual assessed value likely will come in between 75 to 85% of, of that hard cost construction. Now that is based upon hard cost, construction assessors do kind of break down different methods to look at assessment. That is not looking at the income-based approach, which again could elevate that as well. But basically with this development agreement, we wanted to be sure that that we were providing the most amount of accurate information upfront to allow us to continue to move forward. So again, we feel that the 7.5 figure in here is a conservative value that, that will both, you know, be upfront to the development group as well as to the common council and the, and the city taxpayers. So again, that's where the, that, that valuation comes in. Oh, just looking at my notes. So again, and then I guess the last piece with that is, is an updated timeline. So there's just a few things that the development group is still working on. They are working on finalizing their financials. And part of that is securing this performance incentive. If they do not get this performance incentive, they likely cannot construct this. If they do not get this performance incentive, they likely cannot construct this project as it has been presented. So again, this is the same project that was presented to the common council back a year ago. Roughly a year ago, but if if they do not lock in this incentive, two things either have to happen. One. They they reduce the project, reduce the the amount of funds, increase the units, or or they just can't do the project. Now, I would say that that this project is is a very iconic. An influential project that is going to be very good for the city of Manash and the downtown for years to come. And and again, I would have likely supported a performance incentive within the existing TIF district, should they have came on the front end. A year ago. So again, I think, you know, we are in a position now that we, you know. Were told by the original developer that this project could happen without an incentive. But we're at this point where we need to to say, do we want this project or not? And there is a gap. They have provided that provided that through their financials. And we feel that we can support that within the existing TIF. One last thing that I guess was was noted at the previous meeting. That I just wanted to touch on, I believe Alderman Nichols noted the. The actual TIF district in the project plan. Does does a TIF have the capacity? And the ability to to fulfill this development agreement with without the project plan amendment? So again, staff presented at the last meeting that we felt strongly that it did have the capacity. As well as the flexibility within the original development or project plan. To support this development and this performance incentive in this pay-go style TIF. We have verbally confirmed that with Ellers and Associates. That we have had them kind of look back at the original project plan, look at what what it is we are looking to do here. And they've they felt and agreed that staff's opinion of that was correct, so we can move forward in that fashion. So. Again, staff does firmly recommend approval of this of this Second Amendment to the Development Agreement and. Again, hopefully with one last push, we can get a shovel on the ground and I can answer any questions from there.
Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. So the TIF that we're talking about is TIF 10.
Yes.
And I and. I had some concerns about the the payment schedule. And Sam, could you explain to the rest of the group about the performance incentives? They're not.
Yeah.
Not that they're not at the higher end. I mean, a lot of people think that. When you do a TIF, it's all set in one type of payment schedule. This is. This is enough incentive for the developers to go to. The bank or credit union and get the financing. Could you explain that part, especially like? Kind of the differences in some of the other communities near us that are kind of on the higher end when looking for incentives?
Yeah, certainly. So again, this is, like you stated, this is an estimated payment schedule based upon some assumptions that we have right now. You know, it's kind of noted in the notes there. We are looking at, you know, potentially 70% completion of the project as of 1-1 of 22. You know, we have in the Second Amendment that final completion would be around spring of 2023. So again, that final valuation would not come until 1-1 of 2023. So that's why you kind of see that leg in the tax increment that is collected between year 23 and year 24. Again, revenues lag a year, so they they are basically the revenues come after the the project is complete. So. In the next column, that is the the performance instead of of 70% of the tax increment or of the revenues coming in. We have historically, you know, we have, as of most recently, the the project on the east side. Provided up to 95%. It that that percent always always kind of depends on on what the developers' needs are. Again, with this developer coming at this stage of the project, they're noting that 70% is what they need to to make this project happen. Again, the nice thing about this is that we have we have been able to see that gap. Oftentimes, if a developer came on the front end, they would say, you know, we need 95% to to make this happen without. The city staff having any kind of secured documentation of of what the actual construction is. So. Again, this is, you know, different in in that fashion. So as we go through, again, this is an estimated 11 years of payments at at the 70% through the life of the district. Roughly $1.5 million. That gets to 19.92% of the valuation of that first full year. So again, this is estimating. That first full year of 1-1 of 2023 that we have that valuation of 7.5 million. So again, that 19.92 is right up at that that 20% mark. So the 20% comes into play as what we look at as the max incentive. So. So if if for some reason tax rates increased or or some other factor within this within this. Payment schedule changes and they're getting paid. More frequently or or larger payments on on earlier years, it's possible that that last year would be a smaller amount. So. That's where the the 20% kind of impacts there. Now, 20% is just kind of a standard that. The city as well as a lot of municipalities like to go with. I know recently there are, there have been developments in the city of Appleton as well as the the city of Nina that have been 25, 30 plus percent. So again, it it really all depends on on how bad does the city wants this project. But 20% is is typically a pretty standard amount there. So what we are looking at is with this again, and I will say. Multiple times. The developer was so long far through this process that is different than most that they are able to say. We have a gap. We cannot do this. We cannot lock in our financing without approving this performance incentive. It's in an existing TIF district. We have the capacity to do that. So again. I feel very strongly that this we should recommend or we should approve this. Performance incentive, the Second Amendment, and and allow this development group to to move on with the construction of the project. As it was presented and and to continue to move forward.
And for people to be concerned, I mean, this is a a pay-go style TIF. We've experienced that in the past. We've worked with that. That works very well for Manasha. There's some miscommunication out there about the. I don't know what you want to call it, the retention basin. You know, what people have to understand is the DNR is requiring us to do this regardless of this project. This is going to happen anyways, and our estimates have come in much less than what they were before. So I. I feel a little more comfortable after talking with Sam about the the performance incentives. Compared to our neighboring communities and what we're willing to put forward to make this project happen. There's a misunderstanding that these are like. Taxes, people's taxes. That's not what it is. And. I don't read Facebook. I stay off of Facebook, but people tell me when they call me what they saw on Facebook and. There's a lot of misinformation out there. So I welcome this, but I don't like how it's stated in the the minutes, and I know I see Ted wants to speak yet too. But. I think it should should be a different style of motion, so maybe I'll come up with something better later. Go ahead, Ted.
Alderman Gaddy.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Sam. I think this is a big win for Manasha, the BRIN area. I give Molly and Brett all the credit. They're very enthused and happy about this. My concern or my question, I don't know if it's for Sam or if it's for Molly and Brett, is. When would you know? If you if you have the finances? At what time do we know Manasha can look to break ground and and start this development? Did they, did the banks or anybody tell tell you anything, or are we waiting on certain things?
Yeah, I'll jump in, Sam. Hello, yeah, so we, last week, we just were working with Covantage Credit Union and last week, whoops, I lost the camera. Last week. We got pre-approved and it is now in underwriting, so things are going on very smoothly and it's going to be near the end of the road here, so.
Okay, I appreciate that. And the other question, well. Sam. I like what you're doing here and. I know this development has changed hand, not changed hands, but well, maybe it did change hands, but it's. Going back and forth and doing everything, but how comfortable are you with this, with getting this settled?
So again, I I tried to communicate as best as I can to to the common council with the information that I have. From what I know and talking with Brett and Molly in their group. This 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 performance incentive will lock in, will lock in the financing. And it will lock in in the project to be able to move forward. One other thing, I guess, that. That the that we are kind of working through is that CDI grant. So again, in order to apply for that, we need to have this development, the Second Amendment approved. That will have to then get submitted to WEDC, and there is another small underwriting process with that. Depending on how it's written, and they have hired out a group to to work on that grant and to actually submit that. But depending on how that is written, it it can be. Three weeks before they can really commence construction. So again, the February dates in here. I think you you heard Kip at the last meeting let a date slip that he wants to start construction the first week in January. And again, so we're we're trying to add some some buffer in here, some conservative numbers for the end of February, but. I'm very hopeful that Brett and Molly and their team can lock in the financing. I know they're still waiting on the appraisal to come back. Hopefully, that is positive in the next week or so. That we can kind of move forward with the approval of this and and really get this project going.
Okay, thank you for your efforts. Good luck, Molly and Brett.
Thank you.
Alderman Nichols.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I just want to say that I made a mistake at the last meeting, and I apologize for sending everyone down the rabbit hole of the stormwater project. Because after we did a little more digging, the stormwater piece of this is not. Funded through the TIF. It is funded 100% through the stormwater utility. So I'm sorry for that mistake, but I'm also glad we went and verified. That as part of this. And Director Schrader, I'm glad to see or to hear that Ellers was contacted. As part of this process, just to make sure that our Ts were crossed and Is were dotted. In the amendment itself. On page two of the amendment. In the first half of the page, sections. 3.6. They are, those sections outline when the incentive payments begin to be paid. Could you talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, certainly. So this is a very kind of standard language that we actually used on our last development agreement with a project on our east side, but. Basically, how this how this payment would work is that the first year, the first payment year would be November 1 of 2023. So. We will, based upon the timeline that we are looking at currently, construction should, from what we're told. Would be about a 14-month construction period from whenever it started. So we're looking at spring of 2023 for that construction to be completed. So. The first payment year, again, the fall of 2023 will be after the CO had been issued in the spring of 2023, excuse me, for that project.
CO being Certificate of Occupancy?
Yep, sorry.
Um, so to summarize that, no incentive payments will be made until the project is 100% completed.
That is how this is drafted, yes.
Thank you. That is something that you and I talked about a few weeks ago, but that I forgot to mention at the last meeting, so. I do appreciate that being in the amendment. Are there any stipulations whether addressed in the amendments or in the original agreement that require? The property to remain in the ownership of this group through the life of the TIF?
Yes. So page, page 10 of the original development agreement under Article 7 miscellaneous provisions. 7.3 does state that the rights, duties, obligations of YBR of this agreement may not be assigned. By YBR without the written consent of the city to the assignment. So furthermore, it shall not sell, assign, or transfer any of the portions of the property through the life of the district without the written consent of the city. But that shall not be unreasonably withheld. So again, any type of transfer of ownership. Transfer of of payments, assignments, anything in that nature would have to get approval by the common council. Now, similar to a lot of development agreements, they do typically put these projects into a separate LLC. So YBR Properties again is a. Development group. They're looking at multiple properties in the valley down in Oshkosh. So we kind of do anticipate, and I think we've had the preliminary conversations with them. That they likely would come at a later date to to assign this project specifically to an LLC specific to this project and to this property. As explained to them, that just would need to come to the common council for for final approval. Again, same ownership, same. Managing members, same investment group, just kind of that assignment to a new property owner, if you will. To have separate projects under separate LLCs.
Thank you. I think that's really important now, especially that there are incentive payments involved, and I wanted to point that out, that that is a condition. And then you talked a little bit about the requirement to demonstrate financial ability. And so can you again talk about how that will happen before a transfer of property?
Yeah, so within the original development agreement, again, we had noted that because the city does own some of these properties, that prior to the city actually transferring those properties. We shall basically review some financials, you know, substantial financial review that that they do have. The the bank approval, the lending, the investment, the equity to complete the project as presented. Now, again, in kind of conversations with the development group up to this point. We're pretty positive they have all of that, except. This last piece of the puzzle, which is this performance incentive. So again, I think Brett noted it earlier that they do have the preapproval from Covantage Credit Union. They're kind of just finalizing the underwriting, finalizing that appraisal. And with this Second Amendment, we're hoping that that can get locked in, and this again, this project can keep moving forward. So. That financial review, we likely would submit some documentation to Jennifer Sassen, the Finance Director, to kind of skim over. And then we kind of give that go ahead that, yeah, we can, they do have the financing to to complete the project as presented and as as proposed to move forward.
Thank you. And again, since this is a pay-go TIF. And the stormwater thing is not part of the TIF, I'm comfortable, more comfortable moving forward with that. My last question. That I had was already addressed, and that had to do with the valuation. Numbers that came in slightly lower than originally stated. So I think that takes care of the things that I asked about. Two weeks ago at the last meeting and that were concerning to me. Thank you.
Alderman Soda.
Thank you, Mayor. Kind of touching back on what Alderman Nichols addressed. You know, why were we only just given a Second Amendment? Agreement? Why weren't we just given a a a full new draft? Other than just the amendment, because, you know, she just addressed about the. The storm detention facility and originally that we, and even Alderman Taylor brought it up last time. That was like a $2 million. Project. Now it's coming at much less our estimates, but. I feel uncomfortable because it says we're going to borrow up to 2,500,000. I don't want all of a sudden for staff or the city to say, well, we're going to borrow 2.5 million. That's what was in the agreement. I don't want that happening. So you get, can you address that? By the way, I do want to address what Alderman Nichols talked about. By the way, I do want to address what Alderman Nichols talked about. She is feeling more comfortable that, um, it's coming from the stormwater utility, but we did open it up with the possibility of if we had to, we could still use TIF dollars. So,
Yes.
But we don't have to do that apparently. So go ahead, Sam.
Yes. Yeah, and, uh, exactly like you said, we did have, uh, it wasn't made up, Alderman Nichols. We did have the conversation, uh, regarding potentially TIF paying for a portion of that underground stormwater facility. Um, again, that is a regional facility that will support other, uh, development, other, um, new development in this area. And the ability to do this, that project now versus, um, when the original project was planned in, I don't even know, 2026 or so, is that we're able to incorporate that with a project. So we're able to put that, uh, directly underneath this parking area and not eat up additional developable areas. So what that does is open up more land for development, um, and, and additional tax base in the future. So again, that, that's a very positive thing that the city is doing now. Again, we do have stormwater, uh, that we put in, um, the budget every year. So again, that's able to kind of move things around to, to get that, to get that project, uh, going. Uh, Director Alex, did you want to touch on that stormwater question at all?
Maybe not.
No, I'm, I'm here. Again, um, Sam is correct or Director Schrader is corrected. Originally, we did, we were concerned with the, the amount. Originally, there's like 3.2 million was what was originally budgeted for that, uh, underground stormwater detention bond. Again, that number's come down significantly and we do have that factored, the full amount, uh, factored into our, uh, stormwater budget. And, uh, uh, certainly believe that we do not need to use any TIF funds, uh, to complete that project.
Mayor, with that said, um, I'm going to make a motion to agree to the Second Amendment to the land purchase and development agreement by and between the City of Manasha and YBR Properties LLC.
So motion second, further discussion. Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor. Quite a few of my questions were answered here, especially by Alderman Nichols and Sandra Taylor. In this document, uh, it talks about the parking. And again, the correction isn't in there yet. It says the hours of 12:00 AM to 6:00 AM that, uh, there'd be no parking out there. And in the document here, it says 12:00 AM. And the city ordinance is six, uh, uh, 2 AM to 6 AM. So that's on page three, two, three, two. And, uh, that should be corrected at some point. Also, uh, Sam, I've asked you and many of the developments that we have that, uh, there'd be a covenant put in that, uh, you tend to have, uh, what we have. I appreciate the, uh, the 40 enclosed underground parking stalls, but then there's roughly 55 surface parking stalls. And, um, you see in a lot of developments, a lot of, uh, areas, uh, boats, trailers, snowmobiles, jet skis, cube vans, storage pods, motorhomes, and, uh, sometimes unlicensed vehicles. And that, that's covered under our ordinance. But in this development, are we going to allow outside storage of, of these items that I just mentioned?
Sam, I think he's asking you.
Yeah, sorry. The internet connection isn't great. You were kind of bouncing in and out. I, I think you were kind of talking about, uh, from in between words, kind of the storage of materials, uh, on the parking lot itself. Is that kind of correct?
That's what I just stated, uh, with the parking, the boats, trailers, snowmobiles, jet skis.
So this, this property is going to be professionally managed again by, um, NAI Fefferley Management Group. Brett, Molly, did you guys want to touch at all, uh, what type of restrictions you guys may be putting on the, the parking lot? If you would allow storage pods or trailers to be parked out there?
None, none at this time. So. Yeah, we would. And taking some of their recommendations as well through all of it, so.
Well, unless it's in writing, the recommendation doesn't fly too far. And Sam, you know, this represents our community. When people come up the waterfront, if they're going to see boats, trailer, snowmobiles, this is an important thing. That's why we have the underground parking. And somehow I would like to see this, uh, sounds like the management group doesn't carry their weight. But, uh, it does reflect on our community tremendously, especially with our place on the water as we brand ourselves and with the boat traffic out the river right there. So what is your recommendation?
Um, again, it, um, i- if it's done in a attractive manner, we do not have, as you stated, uh, anything in the ordinance. This is multiple times that this, I guess, development agreement has come in front of the common council. I'm not sure if, uh, uh, the mayor or attorney captain could address if that could be added at this time, or if that would have to be something that would be brought back.
I guess I don't know how you would prevent someone from bringing their boat to their residency and parking it there for a day. And I don't know that we'd want to prevent that because that's part of the allure of living in the area that you can bring your boat and, and do things on that area. Outdoor storage is another thing. And I do think that we have prohibitions on outdoor storage that we could use if it's something that is a issue.
Mayor, of course, we're not, we're not, uh, uh, short-term parking of a boat or jet skis or a snowmobile isn't the issue here. The issue is long-term storage, as we see in a lot of apartment complexes, a lot of, uh, condo units, you have covenants. And I think, uh, it would be wise to have this in the covenant. We know we have, uh, Sam's office has a tremendous pile of, uh, issues that we try to, uh, work on all the time, 540 Broad Street, 600 Broad Street. And I mean, we just go on and on with these issues. And here's an opportunity to take our downtown and shore up of, and have the developer put a covenant in there for that we don't have this long-term storage of these, uh, sometimes unsightly, units parked out in their, in the parking lot. I don't know how the developer feels. I don't know how the developer feels about that.
I wouldn't think, would think this is not the appropriate time to add that to the development agreement. I'm not sure what other kind of implications it might have if we tried to add that tonight.
What would be the appropriate time to add that, Mayor?
Um, probably six months ago when we originally started the agreement.
Mayor, I bring this up with every unit development, you know I do, because of the problems that we have in the city with these issues. So is this going to be able to put, be put in at a later time or is this, uh, uh, as of tonight, is this final?
I would say this is the.
I can answer this.
Go ahead, Pam.
The original development agreement, when the terms and conditions were entered into originally, that was the time to add this provision. The, what's being, uh, discussed is just an amendment relative to the, uh, financing, not opening up the whole contract to totally renegotiate. So what would happen is if you wanted to do that.
Contract, Pam. I don't think we're opening up the whole contract, Pam. That's a little grandiose on your part. What it is here is, 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 uh, the physical.
Excuse me, uh, Your Honor, do I have the floor?
At this point, yes.
I believe.
We'll go back to Alderman Taylor once you're complete.
And I was just mentioning that the terms and conditions of the contract, uh, were previously negotiated and then we just had an assignment. And now we are having, um, an amendment. If the common council wishes not to approve the amendment, then we would start all over and, um, you know, probably with the base of the contract that we currently have with the, uh, current developer. And then at that point would be, um, appropriate to add new terms and conditions.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, for us that live in the city of Manasha, we're proud of it. And we try to prevent things from happening and moving forward and moving our community forward. And I would like to know what the developers think about this. Are they going to allow boats, snowmobiles, jet skis, cube vans, storage pods, motorhomes parked out long-term in their parking lot?
And I think what they just said is that is not their intention.
But that doesn't, that, that doesn't say much, Mayor. I'd like to know what they're, what, how they're going to shore that up. It's not my intention, you know, for a lot of things, but what does that mean?
It means that it's not their intention. And those parking stalls, if you want me to speak for them, those parking stalls are valuable for them. And if they're eaten up by things that never move, that is going to be a detriment to their development. And they're not going to want that either. Because people need parking for guests and their vehicles. And if it's all eaten up by boats and pods, that's not good for them either.
Okay. Then I would like to ask the developer to find, define what that means.
Brett, did you want to comment any further or not?
Yeah, I mean, the same with the, with the mayor talking, we, we don't have any intentions for doing that at this time. If it's something that we need to take back to our, our group and discuss, we can, but, um, that's kind of where, that's where we're at right now.
And these are also.
Go ahead.
Also high-end apartments. So the intent is that we are, you know, renting them out at a higher rate. And so the, we're not wanting them to look trashy either. We're wanting them to look professional. And we are investing all of this money into the city of Manasha in order to add value to the city. Both as far as like what we're bringing in for apartments and the economic value as well as, um, we want it to look aesthetically pleasing. We want to make it a beautiful place for those that are going to live there as well as for the residents as well.
But you don't have any formula on how long, uh, vehicle, uh, snowmobile, boat, storage units can be parked out there, is that correct?
That is not currently built into the agreement at this time.
Would that be something you, you could add, uh, and bring that back to us at some point? To just, uh, show us that, uh, uh, you care about, uh, our city and that we don't have a trashy looking parking lot on our, on our waterfront?
Yeah, I mean.
We want to respect your wishes and we want to, to consider what's important to you and to the, all the members of the, of the common council. So if that's something that is required or we must do, then we will absolutely consider that.
Okay. Well, I certainly hope, uh, we could do something like that because if you look around, uh, the valley, uh, you can see the developments that don't look very good when they're not managed properly. And when you allow all these items to be parked out in the park a lot, and then it stresses Sam's department. And he gets the phone calls and his people have to go out and, uh, but, uh, I would hope, I would really hope that we see a document, uh, in the near future from your company stating the facts of what could be parked out in the parking lot and for what, what, uh, length or what term of, uh, calendar days, something like that could be. It just helps the development. It helps us and it keeps everything running smooth. And thank you. And thank you for your development at this time.
Alderman Sevenek, did you have something else?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, I want to thank Brett and Molly also, especially for, uh, taking Alderman Taylor's concerns. And, but I also do agree with the city attorney. We're really discussing, you know, this, uh, estimated payment schedule and the Second Amendment, stick to that. But I agree with Alderman Taylor. We don't want this to affect financial in a negative way. And I'm glad you, the way you stated it, you want it to be a positive situation and area. I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
So seeing no further comment, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Do we have a second on that motion?
Tom Grady.
Thank you. Alderman Sevenek?
Hi.
Alderman Schmidt?
Hi.
Alderman Tom Grady?
Hi.
Alderman Ted Grady?
Hi.
Alderman Nichols?
Hi.
Alderman Taylor?
Hi.
Motion carries 6-0.
Item three is the Stronger Heavens program amendment. Did you want to say something first, Sam?
Mayor, I'm going to ask that we hold this postponed until the next meeting. Um, I did have a conversation with Sam. I did find some mistakes in it. And I don't want to spend all night making those changes. And I think it would be just best that, uh, we take two more weeks and, uh, not accept any applications at this time until the next meeting.
I'm fine with that as long as the rest of the council.
Yeah, it's up to the rest of the council if someone wants to second my motion.
I'll second that. There is a motion to postpone to the January, is it fourth meeting, I believe? January meeting. Let's leave it at January meeting. First January meeting. All those in favor?
Hi.
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 Are there any opposed?
I'll do it.
Pardon?
Alderman Ted Grady says name.
Oh, okay. Then we're going to take a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Sevenek?
Hi.
Alderman Schmidt?
Hi.
Alderman Tom Grady?
Hi.
Alderman Ted Grady?
Name.
Alderman Nichols?
Hi.
Alderman Taylor?
Hi.
Motion carries 5-1.
And we'll move on to the offer to purchase of the corner of Takeon Third. Direct, the Director Schrader, is he the one who just dropped off? Or has he, I believe he has dropped off.
He's there. No, he's there.
Just moved, okay. Did you want to explain what this is about? And then we'll move on from there. You moved, your square moved.
Yeah, all, all good. I'm, I'm still here, but I know I'm, my internet connection's popping in and out a little bit. But, uh, so, uh, what we have in front of us, uh, is, uh, a letter that was sent to, uh, addressed to myself, to bring forward to the common council, uh, to look at possibly acquiring, um, parcel 100163-00. This is the southeast corner of the intersection of Third and Takeo Street. Mr. William Kumlek just purchased the property adjacent to it or, uh, 305 Third Street or the property to the east, uh, earlier this fall. Um, and, uh, he is looking at, uh, the space that is provided there. It is, uh, owned by the city. It's a smaller, non-conforming undeveloped lot. Um, and he did make a, uh, an offer in the amount of 6,500 to, to acquire that. So, uh, basically staff wanted to, um, uh, bring this forward to the common council. And, and if there is, uh, support to, to see this through the, the process, uh, to forward this over to, this offer to the city planning commission for their consideration, um, with future action to be brought back to the common council. And again, at that, that time, we would bring that, uh, this forward to all department heads as well to get their input on, on the sale of this property as it is city-owned. But, uh, again, there, um, would be that input from all departments.
Alderman Sevenek?
Um, are you, okay, I, I'm looking at this map that we have in our packet.
Okay.
That he owns all three, or I mean, he owns the 710016400 also.
Uh, no, the, uh, the neighboring property to the. Uh, no, the, the neighboring property to the south owns that property. That driveway that is in there is used currently by that property to the south. So what we would likely do is if the common council recommends kind of moving forward with this, because that neighboring property to the south has been using that driveway on city-owned property, as you can see from the aerial photo, we would likely send them notification that, that this is being considered by the city planning commission and common council. Make sure they are aware that this is coming down the pipe.
So his purpose basically is, is so that he can use it for personal use there?
Yeah. So again, 305 is a very, very small lot. It's non-conforming. Garage on it is not set back far enough from the sidewalk. So his, his personal vehicle actually sticks out into, into the sidewalk, which would be illegal. And, and again, doesn't allow him space to park on his own property. And there's no, obviously no street parking on Third Street. So, you know, the, the property owner here is looking at doing the right thing and saying, hey, there's, you know, this property next door, potentially I could use that driveway as my personal property as well. They, he could certainly back out without potentially getting into an accident because he has noted backing out of his current driveway with the house extending to the sidewalk does create quite division issue and, and he's looking to correct that.
Is he available here tonight or no?
Uh, Mr. Kumlek is not. We can certainly make him aware, and let's go off, aware of the existing discussion or any discussion and, and kind of let him know, you know, that it would be on city planning commission as well as the common council.
Mayor, did you forget to pay the bill?
That's why you went home.
So anyways, so you're recommending this then?
Sure. What we're doing tonight, what we're asking for tonight is for you to recommend that the plan commission considers this and sends a recommendation back to the common council for or against the offer to purchase. So you're not, what you're saying tonight is you think it has merit for the plan commission to look further into this? Not that you're offering it for sale at this point.
The motion, maybe the best motion then is to send this matter to the planning commission for consideration and not. Okay.
There's a motion, a second to refer to the plan commission? Attorney Captain, do I need a roll call vote on this? I don't think I do.
No, you do not.
Okay, all those in favor?
Hi.
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 I thought you meant a vote. I was going to say, yeah, you need a vote.
Are there any opposed? Everyone's frozen. Okay, seeing none, the motion carries. So that'll be on the next plan commission agenda. Item appointments, is there a motion?
Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion for the mayor's appointment of Corey Gordon, Deputy Director of Engineering to the Nina Manasha Sewage Commission for the term of 11 2021 to 11 2023.
Is there a second? A motion is second. Is there any discussion?
Mayor, I would like to say it's been an honor being on this commission. It's totally eye-opening, the complexity of pushing the lever on your toilet. And what happens after that is just amazing. And the amount of technology and the environmental aspect of it is tremendous. And we have a lot of legislation coming down on the phosphorus end of this. And it's going to be costly to remove all this phosphorus throughout the system. But the DNR is pushing this and the cost will come back to the, to, to the taxpayers. So I appreciate the time, sir. Thank you.
Thank you for your service on the commission. Anything else? Alderman Nichols?
Usually when we have mayoral appointments, especially new ones, we have some sort of letter of interest in the packet. And so my question is, why are you offering this appointment? What, I mean, yeah, he's our deputy director of, of engineering, but what makes him qualified for this particular appointment?
Sure. I, you paused right, I mean, you paused again right now. So I wasn't sure if you were finished.
Okay.
There's Alderman Taylor said this is a very technical position. Things that happen in other communities travel through our system and the knowledge of that system is very important that we're not doing things at a commission level that are going to impact our system. And they can have a large impact, causing overflows or or deficiencies in those pipes. So I think that having someone that's very familiar with the system, how that system works, what the potential backlash from doing certain things in that system, how that would affect us is important. And I think having someone that has that really detailed knowledge will be an asset to protect our interests as a community. So that's why I wanted someone with that technical knowledge. As Alderman Taylor said, it is a very technical position. And we had actually talked about Director Radomski being a member at one point as well for those same same reasons.
And yet all of our other boards and commissions have appointments from Manasha. People, citizen members who live in the community. And so what, what would make this one different?
That it's not required in this case. In Harrison, for example, that is the case their administrator serves on the committee. Knowing some of those systems and some of that background knowledge, I think that gives him a greater understanding. And having someone like that for us would also give us that greater understanding. I believe the Director of Public Works and Nina sat on this commission at one point as well. All those things are important for the functioning of this system, being that parts of the system are city-owned and parts of it are grooms.
It's also a paying board. Commission members get paid.
And as being a city employee, those funds would come back to the city rather than go directly to the commissioner. We could check to see if, if those funds don't even need to be paid, but I think they do.
Thank you.
Sure. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor?
Hi.
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 Are there any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, we'll have to have a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Sevenek?
Hi.
Alderman Schmidt?
Hi.
Alderman Tom Grady?
Hi.
Alderman Ted Grady?
Hi.
Alderman Nichols?
Nay.
Alderman Taylor?
Hi.
Motion carries five one.
Item always public comments on any matter that was listed on the agenda. Is there anyone who wishes to speak? Seeing no one, I will accept a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
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 We are adjourned. Alderman Taylor, did you wish?